Commissioner Sanchez, and we'll go from there. Thank you.
Thank you, David, and good afternoon, everybody. I will call this meeting of the South Central Regional Transit District Board to order. It is currently 1:45 PM on May 28, 2025, and I thank you all for joining me. But this time, we'll be calling for the Pledge of Allegiance, so if you can, please join me.
My pledge allegiance to the flag.
Good night, evening, and good evening. Which is meant, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you. And then with that, we will take a roll call. Do you want me to do that, David, or will you?
I can do that. Okay. Let me make one little note. Okay. I'm going to start with Trustee Powi.
Here.
And Mayor Hernandez.
Here. And sorry about my tardiness.
Thank you for being here. And Mayor Murillo.
Present.
And Commissioner Sanchez.
Present.
We do have a quorum, and we can proceed. Thank you.
Excellent. So we're on to Agenda Item Number Four, which is the approval of the agenda. If I can get a motion in a second to approve the agenda, please.
So move. This is Major Powi. Okay. One second.
All right. We thank you. We have a motion for approval by Mayor Murillo and a second by Trustee Powi. All right. David, if you could get a roll call on the approval of the agenda.
Yes, and before that, I want to make a comment. So I did have our John Apple, our new attorney, review the agenda and the wording for the closed session, so I think we're good.
Okay.
Thank you for that. Okay, Trustee Powi.
Yes.
Mayor Hernandez.
Yes.
Mayor Murillo.
Yes.
And Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes. All right, that the agenda is approved. All right, we'll move on to the public input portion of our agenda. If there are any members of the public that would like to speak.
You're welcome.
You're welcome to come up.
Yes. Identify yourself, please.
If you can say it's your name for the record, and there you go, you've just the microphone.
My name is Jordan Baron. I represent involved seven digital media. We are part of the public outreach sessions that we've been hosting throughout New Mexico in conjunction with SBLB, SBLBF, with Kirk Scott. And I just wanted to say that, you know, Kirk's done an amazing job, and we're getting a lot of really valuable input from all of the public outreach sessions that we've been to so far. We're keeping track of all of the online digital surveys, which is helping significantly. And so as soon as we're done with the public outreach sessions, I'll be putting together a pretty comprehensive report for the board to review.
Excellent. We'll be that in addition to the to the report, will we have that as part of the presentation in the future?
That's going to be done by Kurt tonight, and I'm glad he came forward. I wanted to say something. He's being too generous. So you're from the El Paso area, but you also do work across the border, correct?
Correct, yes.
And so you're really here to help with the outreach. Last time, we got caught up in COVID five years ago, and outreach wasn't quite what we hoped it to be, and it's still a struggle. But we are getting some interesting feedback, and we can talk more about that when Kurt makes his presentation. I think this is a really critical part of the program, so we really want to work on it. So thank you for being here.
No, thank you. Thank you. Appreciate your coming.
All right. Thank you for that.
All right.
Now the minutes.
All right, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Six, which is the approval of the meeting minutes from April 23, 2025. If I can get a motion to approve.
So move, Mayor Murillo.
Okay. We'll take that motion. We'll take that motion by Mayor Murillo for approval and a second by a Trustee Powi. Are there any noted changes? Okay, they're not hearing or seeing any? So with that, David, if I can get a roll call in the minutes from April 23, 2025.
Yes, thank you. Trustee Powi.
Yes.
Thank you. Mayor Hernandez.
Yes.
Mayor Murillo.
Yes.
And Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
The item passes.
Excellent. All right, then we're on to the Executive Director's Report, and so David's making his way down to the podium.
All right. This is good afternoon, David Armihoe, Executive Director, SCRTD. This is going to be a little different. I drafted this report to be a little bit of a kickoff before Adam Shea does his budget. So I'm going to go through there. There's three sections in the report. Pretty much the second section is the one that will tip off the issue for the budget. I always like to talk about ridership growth, and that'll be a first part. The second will be we'll talk about our budgets, and then the third is adapting to economic and grant changes. Now, I decided to do this part of the report because I had the opportunity to join the American Public Trans Association within the last two weeks. I went up to Washington, D.C. for several days, got to meet with our congressional staff and get presentations from the administration, which are very interesting and insightful, and just kind of given a track that, you know, I've been doing this for four decades. I've met these people before, so this is not unusual for me. But I did hear a lot of interesting things that I think we're going to have to give it a little time to see how those things are going to work out. So I'll try to cover that in my presentation. On the ridership, we are just past the midpoint of On the ridership, we are just past the midpoint of, through the first seven months, we're already at 98,000 trips. We did 132,000 last year, so we're right on track to do about 170 this year. I just ran the numbers for May today through my projections of the next few days. We're down a little bit, it's like it's gonna be about 13,247, but year over year, that's still about 2,000 more than where we were at this time last year. So our growth for the, for the year through eight months, this is seven, is 27.4%. That's still very healthy, most agencies are lucky to be growing at all, so we're very lucky that we're able to continue to sustain almost 30% a year. And as you can see, every one of the routes are doing very well, the red route's doing good. Even if you look at the, one of the fastest-growing ones this year is the copper. If you go back to the first month, it was 245, and last month it did 676. So you never know, the blue route started at 272, it's already up to 461, and it's had two months in a row, just cradling at 500. We're very impressed with that, I know Tim spent a lot of time going out to different places and finding adding stops and whatever, so that it just keeps growing. And of course, you know, the green route has always done very well, some additional investment in that, you know, we just now recently started Saturday service, so we expect that that's gonna pick up as we get into the summer. The yellow, of course, 8,000, turquoise and so on, so all the routes are doing very, very well, very healthy. May was a tough month because of all the dust and the wind, so we expected a little bit of a downturn of a couple thousand, but still, again, 2,000 more than a year, year over year, so it's still doing very well.
And David, if you could go back real quick, I'm just curious, when I look at, on the ridership for the red route, there was like a, you know, a pretty significant jump of about 30% there, and just was curious what, what kind of drove that part of that? You know, or if there was anything significant that stuck out?
The red route has more service than like the turquoise, almost twice as many buses, so, so it's still doing more than, of course, the turquoise, but it, it varies, because it's going through the farmlands and the area between Anthony and New Mexico, and it connects to New Mexico State University. Now recently, we extended the copper route, which you can see is doing very well, up to New Mexico State University. And so we'll have to start breaking that down, but it does appear that we're getting more ridership, so we're connecting those two routes along with the hatch route, the green route. So that's a natural transfer connection at that point. We're also looking, as we're getting new buses in, and we're programming the next order of some of the hybrids, we're looking, even this week, or even in the next week, we're gonna put one of the hybrids up. We're thinking of focusing it, it may rotate between the turquoise and the red route, but eventually we'll have a couple of hybrids out of the Anthony route, and they'll be running on those two routes. I mention that because every time people see that yellow bus, it gets a lot of attention, and it's, it's a, it's a better ride than what we have out there right now. We're using some of the mid-sized buses, they're good, this is a better bus, so I think that can make a difference in the investment that we're doing, and we got more of those vehicles coming, two more in January. So we'll have four hybrids soon, and so I think that's gonna make a big difference.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you for that question.
And, and I just, and just as a note, maybe we, and maybe I'm jumping ahead at any point, but I really appreciate on, on the green route, because I think one of the things I hear from the constituents is, come the weekend, they, they have appreciated having the access to come into Las Cruces for, you know, for retail, to go into the mall, or any other items that they don't normally get to do during the week, and so that, having that flexibility is great.
I think the green is gonna challenge the turquoise by next year, I think you would see the numbers going up. We'll start seeing it cradle closer to 800, 900 rides a month, and then some.
And then I'd be curious to understand, maybe if we look at it this summer with Trustee Powi in our blue route, is there a potential that we add a, the, something on, on like Saturday or something? As, as we start seeing, that's like the next, that's like the what?
That Loretta's here. The, the two parts to that is, we have been talking, and I've been sharing this with Trustee Powi. It's certainly our hope and intent to do more in the summer months, but the summer's almost here. Some of that depends on her staffing and what she can accomplish with that, but you're right, you know, we're very excited about what the blue can do, and we think there's some opportunity there.
Yeah, because I mean, that, that's like the other, the second question I get the most is, hey, if you've got the blue route, can we do it on Saturdays? Because I think it's like, how do we, how do we get up to Elephant Butte and to the, into Sierra County to, you know, not have to drive and do that? So I think that's, that's why, that's the reason I asked.
Because we also picked up another vehicle, and we're already looking to put that vehicle out there, so we're already reaching the point where you have four vehicles in Las Cruces that are overnight parking at the, at the hospital, which is why we're two years away from building the Venus project. So we're trying to get ahead of these things, but yeah, before you know it, there's gonna be six, seven vehicles, and they're not gonna be happy with us, so we need to be to the next location. So these are all good things, we're having, you know, these are the growing pains, but they're not too bad.
Yep, growing is good.
So I, I set this up in thinking of Adam's presentation, because I wanted to share a few insights. So as we look at our urban funds, we, we ended up a year ago, because of the timeline of the Congress, with a slight reduction. We, we thought we were gonna go from almost 700,000, which we had in '22 and '23, we got cut back to about 635 or something like that. I mean, $60,000 may not seem like a lot, but it's a 10% full cut, and at a time when, you know, every dollar counts. '24 and '25 finally got approved because of the side letter agreements we had to get from the city of Al Paso, and we're working on getting those funds authorized. So we still have to wait several more months through the tip of process, tip amendment process, or going through the MPO, and so on and so forth. So, you know, by the time those things are in place, it's gonna be two years after we actually got the program funded from the United States government. That's just insane, but that's a discussion for another day. Urban funds have been programmed for 2026, so even though we're, we're dealing with a crazy, you know, big budget thing that the president's after, the only upside to us on that is it might actually get done at a time it's supposed to get done by the Congress, which is by October 1st. So we actually might start to get a, catch up a little bit there. Capital grants via our CMEC were delayed through a transfer that had to go on between FHWA and FTA. That's coming due in the next, actually, the first part of it's already coming in, so we have still work for the application approval, and that's being handled by the state. We're also doing another transfer of a grant agreement, and then all these actions have to be programmed into our system. We had to program money for 2024 for operating, and yet that money didn't come in, so we had to offset money, and I'll be honest with you, we leveraged the county money. You know, where we might have done other things, but we put it there instead of capital, whatever, but we managed to get through. So on the other side of it, more money's coming in. Now, this gave us an opportunity to submit for the New Mexico Matching Fund, and I'll talk more about that next month, I'm hoping to bring good news. But we have three grants in right now, we got six grants approved last year, I'm hoping those, those will come through. And I can also say, having been in Senator Heinrich's office and Senator Lujan's office, I did submit at their request, Lujan actually contacted me, a $1.3 million grant for opportunities to do a number of things on our facilities. And that money, as of last week, made it through the deadline and did come into the package, not in the House budget, but it's in the Senate budget. We don't know where that's gonna go, and honestly, the likelihood is it doesn't make it, but it, but we made it through the state of New Mexico. There weren't many projects that got pushed through by the senators, so I think it's to this credit of this board that the, the Senate, senators are willing to support us. So I just wanted to make that clear, one of the things that Adam has to play with is figuring out what goes on. We just found out within the last couple hours how much money we're definitely actually gonna get, and I'll leave it to him to speak on that issue. So it's, it's always a challenge. So what I want to talk briefly now is adapting, this is my third part of the presentation, adapting to the economic and grant changes. So, you know, I've been, like I said, I've been doing this for four decades, so when I look at this, I think about, what are some of the things we can do to ensure that we have resources for the coming year and the year after? So I broke it up into four parts, we're looking at some of the challenges, we have hybrid work-related, that's, that's affecting most people around the country with ridership growth. It's not affecting us as much, partly because Donaña County is not New York City, so people are coming to work, thank you, and people need the transportation. And so we haven't been as adversely affected. Inflation impacting operating capital costs, we already starting to see some of that, we've been lucky so far that the fuel costs have been coming down, but we are seeing some things. I'm, I was asked by the Gilig, we're looking at the next two buses, those Gilig ones, we thought we had several months to, to work with them to get those things. They made demands of us, they said point blank, we need you here in June to sign off on this, because we need to order the parts, get this stuff in before the, you know, tariffs and other things affected, so of course you don't say no to that, so we're gonna make that trip. So it's, it's forcing us to juggle a lot, even within our organization, as we try to stay ahead of the curve. Federal pandemic relief funds, those are being phased out, this is the last year for any of those, we already have gotten our money, so that's not gonna affect us. And then the new grant opportunities from infrastructure legislation, we just got two grants that we have an opportunity to apply for, they're due in in July, so we'll, we'll be looking at those. Those are the ones we've received three grants in the last three years, so we've been very successful with that. So some of the things we're doing, recalibrating schedules and routes to meet the new demands. I can tell you this much, Tim has spent extraordinary amount of time on buses and looking at bus stops over the last two months, and then tweaking bus routes to make things work, including getting the Saturday service in place, and of course, also piloting our on-demand and microservices, all those are coming forward. We did get some funds today that's gonna help us with that. Strategic use of grants, again, we're gonna continue to apply for more zero emission grant funds. We have another three electric buses in the queue that would be delivered next year, on top of the two hybrid electrics. Expanding our grant writing complaints teams, well, that's pretty much me right now, but Adam might talk about it, but we just got lucky, we hired, we think is a really good senior account, accounting person. So like we did with Tim, we'll find a lot of things for that person to do, so this could be one of those. Capital project priority, on some level, we are gonna delay or phase in some of our larger projects. We still have two years to do, or longer actually, for the Venus project, we actually have about four years, four and a half years. But we want to get it in in two, so we're still gonna move through it, but we're gonna do it a little slower than the last one, and make sure we got it done. I just got my email, we, we just completed the NEPA, so we're still working on the state sign-off, and we have to deal with that. So that's another big project we'll be talking about. Focusing on the equity of high, right of return on investment improvements, one of those is gonna be the electric vehicles. So we do have a contractor and engineer that's working with us, Adam and Tim have been working to get all the files, so we're trying to figure out what the baseline is, what would our savings be? The preliminary discussion I've had from our engineer with RBM Construction, Brian Morris, is that from the data he has, even though he hasn't looked at all the historical stuff, he believes we have more than enough capacity with the one acre of the solar array that we're gonna build to generate and cover all of our costs at the facility. That's a pretty significant event, you know, that means whatever we spend, heating, cooling, both buildings, the vehicles themselves, to be able to recover all that. Now the question is, how do we make a little money on the side, so that, that's the negotiation we're doing with the electric company, so he'll be helping us with that. So again, data-driven financial planning, Adam's working on getting a new accounting system, we're all looking at new systems for the buses, and how we account for the ridership and certain things we do. So all those things will bring a new level of technology over the next 24 months, that I think is gonna make a huge difference for the company. And it'll allow us to do, we talked about this before, like a dashboard, so we can really start showing in real time what our ridership measurements and things that we're doing. Offering bonuses and wage increases, we're trying to stay up, we, we reset our budget that Adam's gonna present based on the city of Las Cruces, because we've been staying with their salaries, although we're a little bit behind, but we stayed up with them whenever they give a increase, so they're doing a 5% increase, so we built our budget around that, but Adam will show you that we, we, we have the resources to do that. And then now we're investing in training and improving working conditions, so we've been using the new, I, I like to call it the media room, but I guess it's our trading center. But we've been doing more, more, more meetings with Gilig and with other groups, and we've had some discussions with some of the, some of our peers on, on how we can make better use of that. Collaborating with local agencies and integrated planning, that's certainly something I'm gonna want to spend a little time with the county, as we, we've gone back and forth with, we get a lot of good help out of the financial, we're not getting as much help out of the planning side, we did at the beginning, but now we gotta get that back in it, because you guys have a lot of resources. So we, we're trying, it's good that we have an engineer on board, but they're expensive, so our hope is, can we find ways with Sunland Park, Anthony, and the county to tap into each other's resources? And that's it, that's my question, so hopefully that was engaging. Any questions?
Thank you, David, the board members, are there any questions?
Okay.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
This is Major Powi, I just wanted to say thank you for that presentation, David, and thank you for being in Sierra County. Because you need to understand that this county has a large number of people who do not have vehicles, and you are providing their own means of transportation, unless they're bumming a ride with a friend.
Awesome.
So.
Yes, thank you, and I did have the pleasure of making one of the 10-year plan presentations in, in, in your community, town of Williamsburg, sometime in the last two weeks, I don't know, I'm still trying to catch up, I think I did that before I left town, but yeah, it went very well, we had some good feedback.
You're a valuable asset, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, David, and thank you, Trustee Powi, for that feedback, that's always great to hear as we continue to build the service up. All right, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Eight, it's a resolution approving the Infrastructure Capital Improvement Plan, or ICIP, for fiscal year 2027 through fiscal year 2031. If I can, I guess, is this a, is it a discussion, or are we looking to approve the resolution on this?
This would be an action item.
Okay, so if I can get a motion in a second to begin discussion, please. Well. Thank you, Mayor Murillo, I'll second the motion. All right, with that, take it away, Tim.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Chair. So the ICIP, just kind of as a refresher, it's a local planning tool, establishes priorities for districts, counties, that sort of thing. And we file this with the state every year to update a five-year plan. So for this year, we have identified seven priority projects that are on the, the list for the ICIP. The Venus Road Office and Maintenance Facility, the Venus Road Microgrid, electric buses for fiscal year 27, Sunland Park Facility upgrades, hybrid buses for fiscal year 27, bus shelter purchases, and the updates to the microtransit fleet, in that order, respectively. The first one is basically Phase Two of the Venus facility, so in case you're unfamiliar, that's the facility in Las Cruces that we were awarded funds for last year. This would add an office and maintenance facility to that property to help serve the East Mesa, northern portions of our service area, by reducing maintenance response times and deadhead mileage on those vehicles serving that area. The second one, Sunland Park Microgrid Project, I guess I didn't change it right on the other one. This would construct and expand the proposed microgrid at the Sunland Park Mobility and Energy Hub. This project would generate solar energy for the electric bus fleet stationed at Sunland Park, as David mentioned earlier in his presentation. Next is SCR T D Electric Buses, so this would be actually for more electric vans to supplement our existing EV fleet. This project is currently planned for two smaller vans or cutaways for routes with lower ridership, they can't support the use of the electric Giligs. Four is the Sunland Park Transit Facility, so this would expand the Mobility and Energy Hub in Sunland Park with new amenities, such as an expanded garage, automated bus wash, things of that nature. Five is hybrid buses, so we've received partial funding for the purchase of hybrid buses in fiscal year 27. These buses will be newer versions of our existing Gilig hybrids, and would largely be used on routes that are too far from our existing or planned charging infrastructure. Six, Bus Shelters and Transit Vehicles, this is an ongoing project we've had in our ICIP for a while, this would just fund more bus shelters district-wide. And finally, Micro Transit Fleet, this project would help expand the microtransit fleet to help cover any new areas within the SCR T D service area outside of our pilot area, and any excess demand that our existing fleet may not cover upon launch of the service, depending on that demand. The project would also help cover the cost of the microtransit dispatching software, which includes passenger-facing apps for fare collection and booking, and then real-time dispatching for, and directions for drivers. So this year's proposed ICIP prioritizes rapid growth in SCR T D's fleet, implementation and expansion of the upcoming microtransit program, updates to existing buildings and new buildings to support our expansion to the north. The projects also demonstrate our commitment to fiscal responsibility by prioritizing vehicles with lower maintenance and fueling costs. These projects also demonstrate our commitment to cleaner air for our riders and the communities we serve. SCR T D has been moving forward with projects from previous years in the ICIP, and has been able to remove them from the listings in order to make room for new projects. These previous projects include the Venus Road Transfer Facility, along with improvements to the Anthony Facility. With that, I'm here if you have any questions.
Board members, are there any questions on the? Board members, are there any questions on the presentation and the proposed ICIP list?
Here's a listing of the funding that we're proposing over those years, by year.
I think the only question I have is, I guess, is after we approve this, would it, are we working towards having the discussions with our legislators and starting to get in front of them, I figure, I think that's one of the things that we're trying to work on, and the county is getting in front of them soon, and as soon as we can, so that way, hopefully, that starts getting embedded in their memories, and as we, as they have more and more people approach them later through the year, calendar year, that, you know, they've got these other projects on the top of their mind.
The answer is yes, what we've done, or what I've done with help from the team, because initially it was just kind of me, but I was doing it wrong, I was going out there to legislature and having those conversations, we still got money, we did some stuff. Over the last eight years progressively, I now meet with the legislature's staff, or the folks themselves, early. Last year, I started in June, and so whenever they have outreach meetings or something, or I just pick up the phone, I'll call them. What this does, and what Tim has done, he's gone in, over the last two years he's done this, he's cleaned up the ICIP, so it reflects the projects we're working on and what we're doing. So what helps is it helps them, so when we make the request, it's on the list, it's already there. We're not asking for new money or a new ICIP that didn't get approved by this board. So this is probably the major thing that Tim has brought and helped to me and Adam on the budget, is now we're actually caught up and we're asking for things. So you can see, it shows there's like $15 million in the queue, $5 million still to be granted, and that's over the next several years. That keeps changing because we keep getting more money, and we keep getting a lot of state money, which has actually lowered our commitment needs from the legislature. Although this last year, we got $450,000, which is more than enough money to cover the next two hybrid electrics that come in, but we're still going to need money for the electric buses that are coming in next summer or the year after that. So that's what this does, and I think it gives us a little more, a little more professional than where we were a few years ago, and I think the legislature appreciates that.
And I think we have the numbers and everything to reflect what those investments into the system do.
My Jew meeting, we were over at the, wherever that museum is, the farmer's market thing, questions came up, and all three members that were there, including Joanne Ferrari and others, they did my elevator speech, so our legislature understands who we are, where we are, and where we're trying to get to. They also know about the support we have with the county, they know the support we have with the city of Las Cruces and others, and so it's really kind of a, I want to say family, but it's kind of like that, everyone's kind of linked together. But this is really important, because this is really a much more professional approach, and it helps us with the folks at DFA, who really, they work hard on this stuff. Good job, Tim.
Thank you.
All right, board members, I know that we just had the presentation as well as the actual values that we'll be looking at for, listed here on the screen at the moment, but are there any questions? Okay. All right, with that then, we have a motion in a second for approval of the ICIP list for fiscal year 2027 to 2031. If I can get a roll call, please.
Yes, Trustee Powi. Trustee Powi?
She just got muted.
All right.
Yes.
Thank you.
This thing keeps muting me.
Mayor Hernandez.
Yes.
Mayor Muriel.
Yes.
And Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
The item passes, thank you. And that's our last approval item today.
Okay.
The next two are discussion presentations.
Yep, next up, a discussion on the 10-year Finance and Service Plan and Public Outreach Sessions Presentation. All right.
Mr. Kirk Scott, turn it over to you, sir.
Can y'all hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay, good. The, and I wonder if I, David, should I share my screen on this, or?
No, no, you don't have to, it's already on there.
Okay.
You can see it.
Okay, okay.
Sorry, I don't know if there's a preference to whether we can move the slides, or we want to have the screen shared.
I think you just tell the, our IT guys to move the slides as you go.
Okay.
I can just move the slides, it's fine. This is William from IT, I'll just move the slides for you.
Okay. Thank you, William.
Okay. All right, again, my name is Kirk Scott, I'm with SCLBF, we are hiring to do the long, assist SCRTD with a long-term plan, updated that plan that we did about four years ago, four and a half years ago, and there's been so many improvements and expansions and that kind of thing, that the organization felt like it needed, you know, to be updated, so, so that's what we are in the process of, and right now, we're doing the public outreach aspect or part of that, of that study, and thank you. We are, let me do this, okay. So what we're doing is having sessions typically tied in with city commission meetings or that kind of thing, to both inform people about, you know, services that SCRTD have out there, because, you know, a lot of times, that's the biggest challenge, is to just have everybody know what is actually operating, and then, you know, ideas for future improvements. We go on the next slide. The, talk a little bit about when, you know, the history of SCRTD, which I'm sure y'all are completely familiar with, and when the service started, the improvements, the expansions and changes to the routes, and then if you go to the next slide, the, you know, the area, the different counties that SCRTD operates in, which of course includes El Paso County. So after that, we talk about, you know, the fact that SCRTD has a very impressive and challenging linear route structure with a total distance of about 120 miles from southernmost to northernmost point. And I was reminded as I drove up to a meeting at Truth or Consequences the night before, how challenging it can be going down the freeway and some pretty incredible wind gusts. So it is a, you know, it's a challenge to operate in that kind of a service area, but SCRTD does it very well. So moving to the next slide, so we talk about the slide, the services that operate out of Sunland Park, which of course is the yellow route, the busiest route, the silver route, which is next slide, and which is the second busiest route, and then the purple, the purple route, all three operating out of Sunland Park, I'm sure y'all are very familiar with that. We're talking also about the kind of frequencies that the routes have, and also the days that they operate. The next set that we talk about are the routes operating out of Anthony, out of the Anthony Transfer Center, the turquoise, the red route, and then, and then the green route linked, well, and then the purple route, I'm sorry, and then, of course, you know, linking with the red route in Las Cruces to the copper route and the green route. So, and then we also mentioned that the green route links, importantly, I think it links time-wise with the blue route in Hatch, so that people can have a two-way transfer, and it makes the service far more usable. If you just barely miss a bus that just passed by 10 minutes earlier, then you can't go both directions, and with, you know, with a limited time schedule, that's very important. So we go through the different routes in brief, and then we talk about, okay, here's what we want to hear comments about, where should SCRTD provide service, you know, we've shown you where that's providing service now, when and how often should the buses run, and of course, the more frequency, the better, everybody agrees with that, and then what other services can be provided. Of course, we mentioned the neighborhood circulator type service, like the microtransit service, or one connecting to a remote industrial park or that kind of thing, as some of the options. And I will say that in the meetings, you know, the meetings of Chaparral, the meetings of Truth or Consequences, the mention of, hey, we could use a neighborhood circulation route, came up in both of those meetings, along with, you know, visibility is important. Okay, next slide, please. We talk about the different transit providers that SCRTD connects with, you know, not only in, in El Paso, and downtown, and the West Side Transfer Center, also to Anthony, with some of the providers there, and at Las Cruces, of course, with Roadrunner, and the importance of that and making those connections. We talk about, okay, what SCRTD has done to improve and enhance our vehicles, replace vehicles with new vehicles, add facilities, and I think, I reflect David's comment that I think that having the bright yellow buses is a real benefit, because it is always a challenge for people to know, be aware of the bus service that's out there, and know that it's just there, it's operating, it's available. And also, you know, improvements, what are people looking for in terms of improvements to bus stops, shelters, transfer points, that kind of thing. We do have, as was mentioned earlier by Jordan, the, we have schedules, I mean, surveys that are available, we hand those out at the meetings, they can also scan a QR code and do the survey on their phone, which is very handy. And we've made those surveys available, the bus operators for SCRTD do a great job of handing out, retrieving surveys on the buses, and getting those into staff to send over for putting in for analysis, and, and again, all those are available in English and Spanish. And so we're taking those in as we go, and then we take questions and comments from the people, and they're in the attendance, and it's gone really very well overall. I think the one exception, unfortunately, we happened to pick a Sunland Park City Hall meeting where there was a couple of other very popular agenda items on the, on the agenda, and so they didn't have a whole lot of time for us, but we had a great meeting in Chaparral, we had a great meeting in Truth or Consequences, David handled the meeting in Williamsburg, and, and so we will continue working on the public outreach and trying to really get a sense from the general public, not only the bus riders, but just the general public out there about, you know, the kind of services they would like, and what they see as the pros and cons and upsides and whatever of SCRTD's services right now. With that, that is my presentation, I'll be glad to take any questions that people have.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Are the board members any questions? Alrighty, sir, I'm not hearing any, so I appreciate the walkthrough and explanation of the process, and so we look forward to hearing the outcome and all the data that gets gathered for this.
Good.
Thank you.
Kirk, I do, I'm sorry, I do have one question, and this is Meiji Powi. Did you guys ever get out to El Capitan?
We have not been out there, we have, I'm glad you mentioned that, we have, right now, two other meetings scheduled, we have a meeting in Hatch on June 10th, and we've got a meeting in Mesia on June 9th, week from Monday and Tuesday. That's as far, we did get requests at the Truth or Consequences meeting from the, both the, I think the Housing Authority, and maybe the Senior Services Center to have, you know, hey, it would be great to have a presentation for our group out here in this area, but that's as much as we've done so far.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Meiji Powi. Are there any other questions before we move on? Alrighty. Thank you. All right, we're on to agenda item number 10, which is a discussion on our annual budget for fiscal year 2026. Mr. Adam Shea.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good afternoon, SCRTD board members and guests. First page that I'm coming to as far as the budget documentation is the personnel, and under personnel, I've come up with a total of $1,890,965.95. That's broken up between administrative staff, maintenance, transportation, extra board and floaters, as well as operations. That is an 8.96% increase over last year, but looking at last year's figures and the current year's figures, that is also including Saturday and Sunday service, which the original last year figure does not include. Continuing down, under employee benefits, this is FICA, Medicare, unemployment, healthcare, and retirement, total of $637,542.81, that's an increase of 24.94% over the previous year. This is due to an adjustment in healthcare, the amount that we are now paying out, or will be paying out, is significantly higher than what we were earlier this year. To continue on with the other expenditures, under the blue sectioned items, those are the subtotals, under travel and maintenance, total of $325,000, and that is a decrease over, or under, last year's by 16.58%. Supplies, total of $28,000, that's also under by 23.3, or 03%, insurance, that's $52,502. Unfortunately, that is over from last year, only because we are not getting the vehicle discount next year as we are in the current year. I cannot say why. Contractual services, a total of $108,200, that's 16.54% under the current year, and then operating costs, $177,550, that is over by 2.35%. In general, for expenditures, it's only an increase of 6.96% overall from the current year. So far, do I have any questions? And again, this is a high level and preliminary from what the actual is actually going to be presented, but this gives you an idea of what we're looking at. Questions?
Board members, any questions?
Adam, this is Meiji Powi. Would you send this out? Because, you know, I have a hard time, my screen doesn't present your presentation full screen, maybe it's because I don't know what I'm doing, but I have, I'd like to blow it up so I can actually see it.
The initial presentation was in a spreadsheet, but I had it changed for the board into a PDF. I can send you the PDF, which looks exactly like what's on the screen now.
Yeah, and Meiji Powi.
Okay, that one, no.
I believe the, I see for sure that Veronica sent out, I believe, this morning at 10:15.
Okay, that's maybe why I didn't get it.
Okay.
Let me look and see if it's, if I got it, I'll apologize.
Yeah, I'd say it's one of the attachments that I see that Veronica had this morning, it's one of the attachments in that email, and so it's a separate attachment for the fiscal year budget, as Adam's saying, it is a PDF file.
Right. I also want to make a footnote, she just said at the beginning, so I kind of covered you a little bit on the tee off, but what I didn't get to was the specifics.
Okay.
So if we, if we look at it, budget year over budget year, as you can see on the screen, so from '25 to '26, we added the blue route, which was only in a partial part of the year '25, now it's a full amount. The blue route alone added 100,000 miles with all that service up in Sierra County, so the biggest cost was really the vehicles, and we've controlled that cost pretty well. We also added the Saturday service, which just got into operation within the last few weeks, so that's not in the full year, but it's in the full next So that's not in the full year, but it's in the full next year. So that means a couple more drivers, uh, another mechanic and so on and so forth. So there's, there is some inflation here to the, to the budget. But on the other side of it, for just about $100,000, we're buying Saturday service and we're buying the, the Blue Route. So we're really doing very, very well.
That's correct. And several of the items that are on here, uh, that went down from 2025 to 2026 is because now that we are in the new facility, we've had the time to refurbish it. And a lot of costs went in this year that do not have to go in next year. So those costs have automatically come down as well. Are there any other questions so far?
I did get your presentation, I just, I was gone most of the morning.
Yeah, no, no worries. And if you want to, i- if you're, want to take a look at it, I did have a, a trustee Powi, I'll, I have a, a question, um, on this. And I think as you noted, David, I think in overall, probably half of this, um, out of all the looking at it, half of the, uh, of this increase was the increase in premiums. And I, I don't, I guess my, my question was, who, who's our provider for, uh, insurance in terms? Or what, do we have a pool that you, we go through or do we self-insure?
It's New Mexico Self-Insurance Fund. And a lot of, um, New Mexico State Government Agencies are under that fund.
Okay, and I wasn't sure because I, I, I know there's, like, for us in the county, we self-insure. But then on other items, we've been able to go through the Association of Counties. Um, and then I believe like the City of Las Cruces, I don't know if they self-insure or they, whether the, uh, the municipal league of New Ma- the New Mexico Municipal League also had a fund that could be potentially looked at in the future. I know at this point, um, or, you know, I think we're stuck, um, just because I think it's something I, I, I don't know if there might be, um, potential in the future. Um, I, I think overall, I'm, I'm not as, I'm not super concerned because of the, you know, overall, we're only increasing just under 7%.
Yeah.
But it might be something perhaps.
Our history at the beginning, we're, we're in the open market, it was terrible. We went to the New Mexico Municipal League, things got better. But we also found that the New Mexico Municipal League was undercharging. They got into that battle a couple of years ago. So I think we're still paying a little bit of that. But however, we increased miles a lot. So we're running a lot more service hours and miles, so I would expect the cost to go up. I think the issue will be where are we a year from now when the numbers are more aligned? Uh, and you're not seeing that kind of an increase. Uh, if it continues to grow up that rate, you're correct, we would, we need to start looking at other options.
And, and I don't, I, you know, I think, uh, we see, and I know probably my, my fellow board members can agree with this is, um, when it comes to healthcare, we've seen it continue to increase every, you know, year over year. Um, I believe we had something like an 8% to 9% increase ourselves in, for the county in our premiums. And so, um, i- it's definitely significant, uh, costs that eventually that start to add up. And so anyways, I just, you know, they said it, it might be something, I'd be curious maybe as we get into the next year, um, you know, is there a potential for us to, to look at something? But I think to be, um, 100,000 is 100,000. But then again, you know, 100,000, when we're looking at a, over $3 million budget, you know, is, is not, you know, the, probably the, you know, significantly, that's going to be the one thing that we go with. If, if we're, if we're, if it's causing us significant issues, um, financially, then we have other problems.
Are there any other questions regarding the expenditures before I move on to revenue? Okay, on the screen now is the revenue. And I show a total amount of $3,310,559.65. That's an increase over the previous year, or, or 2025 of 2.9%. Grants and MOUs, um, $137,242.50. Other grants and MOUs, that's, uh, local and, uh, uh, that's, uh, local county. And that is a total of $2,431,484.15. Next section is the 5307, which is primarily the funds that we're receiving through Region 9, or 6, Region 6, total amount of $633,833. Um, that's an increase of 19.1% over, or of the total budget, pardon me. Uh, and then finally, the other revenue, which also includes half a year of fare box collection, $108,000 for a total of $3,000,2, or $3,310,559.65. Fortunately, if you look down further at the bottom of that page, you'll see that the expenditures, which is $3,219,760.75, gives us still a balance of $90,798.89 to carry over. That's our general operating revenue. Before I go over to capital, is there any questions?
Go ahead, David. Okay, uh, well, I, kind of a footnote, and while we still have Tim with us, by the way, he's leaving us this, this week, this, this week. He's moving to Odessa, Texas.
He's back home.
He got to love Odessa. Um, I wanted to say this because he might want to jump in. So on the fare box, uh, when we were building this thing up, Adam and I were going around in circles. We were trying to get out of the red, back into the black, and we kind of found a way to do that. Today, we picked up some more money from the state. We're still working through that, those numbers, uh, that could possibly add. What do you think, Adam, another 90,000?
About, it's about 90,000 that I could tell. Again, there might be other areas that dropped off a bit. I'm gonna, uh, have to sit down and take a look for sure, exactly how it's gonna pan out.
So as you get to the next month, which will be the budget request for approval today, this is the presentation. We could amend this 38,000 and say, okay, let's go another year of free fares, certainly helping us with the fare box. On the other hand, the reason I'm gonna throw this at Tim, because he can be the bad guy. If we, if we don't have fares and we try to roll out the micro-transit, that can be an adverse effect. Can you talk to that, Tim, please?
Yeah, so I, well, for one, the major problem is, um, your paratransit fares can't be more than 200% of your fixed drop fares. Um, and so if we're running that as a quasi, like, paratransit service, we may have to, um, you know, divide by zero essentially and have no revenue for fares, uh, at least for those who qualify for paratransit. Um, but the cost for a paratransit is also, or the micro-transit is generally larger. Uh, you wouldn't want to not charge fares on that one, um, just because of the distances that they might cover, uh, the fact that they're not, you're not getting quite the efficiencies of, of people sharing the route over the, the course of the route, things like that. So, um, you know, it, it's definitely something that needs to be reviewed and addressed before moving forward.
Correct. So that's why we did a half a year, so we, we committed to do all the way through December. And that's reflected in the MOU that we're doing with the county. But I am suggesting that we have another month to look at this and we can have this dialogue with the board and we'll come in with some options.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, board members, are there any questions before, uh, at least on the revenue side of the, of the balance sheet? Okay.
Thank you. Finally, the capital portion, and, uh, it is like the largest part. I think it's even bigger than the expenditures. There's so many that's going on. Um, first of all, 5303, 5304, which is Metropolitan Thin Planning. It's about $90,353.48. That's basically a carryover from 2025, as we did not use any of those funds. Same thing with the 5310, uh, a couple of vans as an expansion. Uh, that is a total of $216,118. That's same thing, carryover from previous year. And fine, uh, also 5311, total of $437,880.84, carryover from 2025. Going into local funds, this has been kind of the cherry on the top for us this year. And that has to do with the New Mexico Matching Grants that have, as you can see from the left side, there is a number of them. And in fact, we've still got one that is outstanding, that we have not heard from, or heard about yet, that's over 800,000. So basically, the amount that is, uh, for the next fiscal year 2026, FHWA, uh, that is the, uh, microgrid and battery storage. That is something that we have been working on, uh, one of the projects that we have been working on. And we'll finalize as far as the amount that's coming over to the new fiscal year. Next section is the 5307, which is the Region 6 funds. You'll notice that there was $749,432.51 available in the current year. Some of that is being carried over and including, um, fiscal year 2025 funds. It's a total of $862,512 that we'll have available in the next fiscal year. 5339. This one is a large, or a significant increase from $1,697,386.96 to $4,781,369.77, or 70 cents. And that's primarily because of the CMAC money that's finally, um, getting coded in so that we, and we will be making those purchases within the next fiscal year. Actually, we used $305,000 this fiscal year. Nothing is for the next fiscal year, as it's all earmarked as 5339B or C, which is, B is the next section. We had $9,172,504.42 in the current fiscal year. We are anticipating at this point, $159,085.26. Again, uh, after today's meeting, these items will be updated, so we'll know better how we stand. Um, the amount, items that are out there are specific to the items that are left over on the current budget, or the carryover budget, anyway. 5339C. We had $2,500,000 for the current fiscal year, but we used a large portion of that, uh, with the purchase of two buses. If you look back up at the 5339B, the reason that we do not have such a huge carryover is because a good portion, over a million dollars, of that fiscal year '25 went for the purchase of the Sunland Park facility. So in summary, or the end result fiscal year '25, we had $17,181,911.21 in the budget. For fiscal year '26, $8,589,387.96. But still, this year does not compare to any other year when it comes to, uh, the funds that are available to, uh, SCRTD, when, especially when it comes to the capital. Are there any questions?
Board members, any questions on the capital side of the, uh, budget? All right. Thank you, Adam. Good. All right.
The next, uh, item that I have is our, uh, closed session, which would be to discuss personnel matters. So if I can get a motion to go into closed session to discuss the following items, which is number one, personnel matters as authorized by the Open Meetings Act.
I got it.
Section 10-15-1H2 of NMSA 1978. If I can get a motion, please.
Hello.
All right, I'll make them, I'll make the motion that we go into closed session as stated. If I can get a second, uh, from any of the board members, please.
Second, Mayor Murillo.
Thank you. All right, we have a, a second. I, I think I heard, uh, Mayor Hernandez pop in there. So with that, I will, if we get a roll call vote, please.
And we will switch that over.
Yeah, so we'll do that. So I'll take a quick, uh, roll call vote.
Oh.
Trustee Powi, to, how do you vote to go into closed session? That's a yes. Mayor Murillo?
Yes.
Mayor Hernandez?
Yes.
And I vote yes. With that, uh, we will go into closed session starting at 2:45 PM. All right, we are back on. It is 2:50 PM on Wednesday, May 28th. And this, we are back in open session. Let the record reflect that the only things discussed during closed session were the items noted in the motion to go into closed session. And with that, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the executive director's contract with the items particularly of notice, that the term of the agreement will go from April 1st, 2025, through December 31st, 2028. In addition, the following salary will be reflected, salary increases will be reflected. Effective as of April 1st, 2025, the executive director will have an annual salary of $143,718.43. And effective on January 1st, 2026, there will be an increase to $161,368.6. If I can get a second for the approval of the executive director's contract, please.
I second, Mayor Murillo.
For you, sir.
Thank you. All right, I heard Mayor Murillo jump in first. Thank you, Mayor Hernandez. So with that, I'll take a roll call. Trustee Powi?
Yes.
Thank you. Mayor Murillo?
Yes.
All right, Mayor Hernandez?
Yes.
I vote yes. And so with that, David, you're stuck with us for the next
Thank you.
few years. And so I appreciate you, board members, for participating and helping with the closed session in today's meeting. And with that, I'll make a note that our next meeting is going to be on June 25th, 2025. But with that, we will call this meeting adjourned at 2:52 PM. Thank you all for joining, and we will see you all next month.